All rise please for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. I'll be meeting to order here by. By roll call. Uh, Councilor Baumgartner.
Here.
Evers.
Here.
Ferguson is absent. Patternist.
Here.
Hockinson, I'm here. Uh, we do have a quorum and we'll call the meeting to order. We'll start off here with the public forum portion of the of the meeting here. Uh, this is the time when members of the public can address council. Uh, when addressing council, please provide your name for the meeting record. Uh, speaking times will be limited to three minutes and uh. Um, yeah, so if anybody wishes to uh, address the council, now's the time.
Go ahead. Good evening, my name is Todd Howard. Um, after last uh, meeting. Had the opportunity to speak to a couple of you in regards to the. Water plant and that reverse osmosis and that extra load of. Costs that's going to be dumped on the city of Olivia. Um, just curious to know if there's been any. I know it's only been two weeks, but finding more information there and. As we had spoke about before, I'm curious to know what the city's going to be able to chase. That is going to help the members of the city. Um, we spoke about this reverse osmosis system at the very beginning and how aggressive that water is going to be. Um, what? Programs or grant monies is the city chasing if there's any available that's going to help the consumer from the. Damage that this water is going to do in the future to not only the supply lines from the curb to their homes, but also. The water lines that are in their homes for the for the consumers of the city.
Probably Dave Urban can help you with that. I know he's gonna blend back, so it won't be so. It won't be, it'll be like ten grains hard or something, I think he mentioned, and he has the ability to dial it in. But that's about the extent that I know. So if you talk to him, you can probably get better information. Urban.
Okay.
Um.
We'll get.
May I? May I comment, Mr. Mayor? Uh, the PUC meeting will be on this specific topic. Um, and that will be on Wednesday, April tenth at six PM. Those are open meetings and the SEH engineer will be presenting. You're very welcome to come. Um, to get further briefed on the topic.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Anybody else wish to address counsel?
It's alright, it's all three of us.
We didn't know the numbers, so we just put. Sorry.
Perfect.
Um, I'm Dan Kelchin with Lightbeam Internet. Um, I know we each have three minutes to speak. Um, so I did um, invite all the employees. Of Lightbeam to join us, and as you can see, they all did show up right here. So, um. So I'll try to get through this in three minutes. Um, if I go a little longer, will I need to pass it to them or can I just?
Finish it out. Well, uh, we'll hear you out.
Okay, thank you, John. Um. We are here today on behalf of Lightbeam Internet and its Olivia customers to request the city revisit plans. To require meter meter devices on street poles. Over the past year, we've been working with and trying to communicate to city staff, attorneys and committees. On the challenges of what we're being asked to do. But it seems to have led to more confusion, so I feel it's best to address these concerns as outlined in the letter. I provided all of you on Friday. Um, did you all get that letter?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. Um, I'd like to start actually by briefly um, airing a broader concern that Lightbeam, in our opinion, has been um, getting kind of a ca- a case of. Whiplash in regards to the different directions placed on us by the city of Olivia. Um, for over a year now, we've been trying to figure out um, what problem. Um, is trying to be solved and how to resolve it in a way that won't interrupt service um, that we provide. Uh, one example um, of this is approximately eight months ago. Um, then city attorney Walton delivered a contract to Lightbeam to sign to continue operating within the city. Um, however, if we had signed that contract, we would have been required to remove our equipment from all of the poles in the city. Um, now thirteen months uh, into this process, there is yet a different direction that we feel doesn't make technical or economic sense. So um, in our final attempt, we are bringing this before the council in hopes of a better direction for our. Um, the following is a short summary of the facts detailed in the letter that I sent you guys on Friday. Um, the city now wants us to install power meters at all thirty-seven of our antenna locations around town. Um. This means um, it'll require bringing a hundred and twenty volt power from the top of a pole. Or from the inside of a metal pole to a meter at pedestrian level. To a circuit breaker box and then back up the pole to our antenna equipment. I would like the council to consider both the safety and aesthetic ramifications of doing that at thirty-seven. Pole and streetlights around town, including in many instances instances, streetlights located. In the corner of a residence's front yard. Um. Also, if this policy goes through any other business wanting to lease pole space, we need to add their own meter to the pole for their equipment. How many meters would we need to stick on a pole before someone says, well, that was a bad idea? Besides having Lightbeam bear the cost of installing these thirty-seven meters. With an estimated price north of fifty thousand dollars. The city now wants to bill each antenna node as if it was a separate business location, including but not limited to charging Lightbeam. A s- a a commercial monthly base fee at each of the thirty-seven antenna locations. Using the two thousand twenty-four um, updated commercial electric rate of twelve point three five cents per kilowatt hour. Each antenna location consumes around two dollars and twenty-five cents worth of electricity per month. In other words, the equipment at each location consumes about twenty-five watts of power. For reference, a single overhead high efficiency, high efficiency LED light fixture that would be found in an office. Just think of the normal like that, those square, but an LED version of that would use uses between forty and fifty watts. Which is about double. When we were presented with the most recent pole attachment agreement in November. It stated that a non-metered option was available. But the the pricing appendix did not include a non-metered fee. That fee option was actually included in the previous agreement that we were asked to sign back in August. When we asked why the non-metered pricing was missing, we were told meters would be required because of a technical reason. Which is related to um, electric electricity reporting. That the city um, wasn't aware of um, at that time. Later, that reason was found to be inaccurate. However, after learning this, the non-metered price option. Was never added to the new agreement. Council members. If you truly feel a city needs a meter at every one of our thirty-seven antennas around town. And you think we need to be billed as if we're thirty-seven separate companies. That is very much your choice. It is our job to inform the council. That choice may have implications on our ability to serve this community. I don't think customers want to see the city driving Lightbeam or other small businesses down these kinds of roads. As it only leads to fewer businesses and services in this great community. We urge the council to take a step back. Look at the big picture. Ask, what problem are we trying to solve? And make sure that we aren't missing the forest for the trees by requiring meters on every device. We are simply asking that you add back the original flat per-location electrical fee as previously done. Thank you all for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, guys.
Um, if there are any other questions or about that, we can stick around, otherwise we'll let you get on with your meeting.
We'll uh, so the next next item is the agenda approval, so if anybody wants to add to the agenda.
Right, perfect, thank you.
Through that process. So. Uh, the next item is the agenda approval. Are there any additions to the agenda?
I'd like to add section D to our discussion item about the pole attachment agreement.
Start a second.
I'll second.
Motion's been made by patternist to add uh, discussion about pole attachment agreement. To uh, the discussion item, item D, seconded by Evers. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose same sign.
Say aye at the appropriate time, I've been being abstained.
Okay. Okay, we'll add uh, pole attachment agreement to discussion item D. Any other uh? Additions to the agenda? Alright, uh, hearing done, I'll call for a motion to approve the um. The agenda with additions. Go. Second. Motion's been made by Evers, seconded by patternist to approve the amended agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose same sign. Agenda is approved as um, amended. Uh, right now, also uh, moving down to item four, we have the consent agenda, which includes meeting minutes for March eighteen. Uh, the resolution forty governing write-in vote counting, resolution forty-one. Which which is an authorization to execute a min dot grant agreement for airport and route improvement. And also the uh, March dispersments. Call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made by Baumgartner, seconded by patternist to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose same sign. Consent agenda carries as written. Moving down to discussion and business items, we have a public hearing and second reading of ordinance. Uh, two. The fine and fee schedule. I'll call for a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Removed.
Second.
Motion's been made by Baumgartner, seconded by patternist to adopt the ordinance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in fa- yep.
Mayor, did you have the hearing? Or offer the hearing?
Oh. Pardon me, Pam, I appreciate that. As a ma- as a matter of uh. Okay, so we will uh. We'll close down the uh, the regular meeting, open up a public hearing uh, regarding ordinance two. Does anybody from the public wish to address counsel on ordinance two? The fine and fee schedule. Not seeing any action there, so we'll close down the public. Uh, public hearing uh, on ordinance two and call for a motion to adopt the ordinance.
So move then.
Alright, motions been made by patternist, seconded by Baumgartner to approve the ordinance. Uh, to adopt the ordinance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose same sign. So moving on uh, as a, the next item on that ordinance is uh, resolution forty-two. The authorization, authorizing title and summary publication of ordinance two. I'll call for a motion to adopt that resolution.
Second.
Motion's been made by Evers, seconded by Baumgartner to approve resolution forty-two. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose same sign. Motion carries. Alright, we also have the second reading of ordinance three. This is amending chapter fifty and fifty-two. Of Olivia City Code Regarding Utility Charges and Franchise Required Requir- requirements. I'll call for a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Moved.
Aren't we just, we're just having a second reading?
Reading. We don't have a motion on a reading.
Have a motion to approve that ordinance.
We're adopting this at this time.
Yeah, we're adopting it.
Well, that's not how it reads, but.
Yeah, the second, the second reading just means that there's been the ten days. Uh, for for public to be able to comment on that um, under statute when you. Um, have a first reading, then there's ten days where um, under the statutes. To review that, and so this is just the second time it's in front of the council, basically. So it would be the time for the motion if council wants to approve it.
I'm learning new things over here.
Yeah, a motion on the table by Baumgartner is our second. Seconded by Evers. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Right.
I'll oppose same sign. Motion carries. Alright, now I'll move down to five C, conversation about the electric department vehicle.
Yep.
So I've got two bids for a, for the replacement of our large bucket truck. Our current large bucket truck is a two thousand five. Um, fifty-five foot elbow boom. Um, we're looking to replace that with a. A newer model, obviously, with a different style of boom, it's gonna have a squirt in it. Um. As far as the old truck, we're we're thinking probably put it up for bids. I I know there's outside interest and and from the vendor, we haven't uh. Gotten a real positive response as far as what they, what they'd wanna, you know, offer up for the truck, so. It's like, once they get to be twenty years old, they don't want it. They're, they make that pretty clear, so. And the first bid is a. Is a Sourcewell quote, which is a government. Um, purchasing cooperative. And then the second bid is direct through ABM. It's for the exact same truck and. ABM actually beat the Sourcewell quote. By about four thousand.
Is there any type of state contract on something like this?
Um, for chassis there is, um, but Sourcewell kinda is is like a state contracting. Yeah. Right. It's pretty much the same type of thing. It's cooperative purchasing.
It's three thirteen versus two oh nine, two ten.
Uh, three oh nine, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I always ask this question, but this was budgeted and the funds are.
Yep.
We'll get more into that after the official meeting.
Yes.
During the work session, yes.
Yeah, so I'll tell you how many years, but I know it's been a, a long process, so.
Mentioned it, yep.
Yeah.
Well, I mean. People need tools to do their jobs, right?
Yeah.
And as far as the system, you know, we got, we're probably fifty-five percent underground now. Um. It'll probably take another twenty to twenty-five years to, at the rate we're going to, to finish it, so. But this this truck is also used in public works for trimming trees. Cause the, a lot of the, the upper stuff, they can't get out with their small truck, so.
Do some towns like rent it from us at all to use it?
Um, well, they rent us with the truck. Yes, yes, yep, yep.
It comes with the truck.
Yeah, we we won't, we won't run out of equipment though.
Yeah.
Yep.
Guess I'd make a motion to accept the. Vote from uh, ABM Equipment, Inc. For a three oh nine, nine hundred.
Second.
Motion's been made by Evers, seconded by patternist to approve the purchase of boom truck through ABM Equipment. Uh. Referencing the quote for three oh nine, nine hundred. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Troy.
Yep.
Alright. Now we have uh, discussion item five D, uh, pole attachment agreement. We'll uh, we'll open it up for for conversation.
Wanna go first or should I?
Do.
Alright.
Don't keep running that chin longer than me, so.
That was what?
It's in the.
Ah, sure.
Okay.
So. Last time we brought the small pole attachment agreement up, I was the one pushing for standardization in our practices, which I still do to this day. Um. But I guess what I intended to be conveyed to everybody, but not. Apparently say the quiet part out loud is we need to figure out something that works better than this, cause this is a bad solution. Um. It is way too costly and. For the business and pretty much a bait and switch, cause we've had them. Uh. We have asked, well, the business wanted to and did invest a lot of capital into bringing. A product like this to our community. And we are then going to raise the prices on um, their rental fee by like. I'm very large multiple, I think it's in the letter that he wrote, but it was like four thousand percent. I didn't do the math, whatever. Um, I feel like that's not a very good business practice from our side. Um. I also understand that. This being attached to some of our electrical poles or whatever inside of enterprise funds. Means that we should be at a minimum recouping our investment and probably getting a return on it. This seems excessive to that, though, in my opinion. Um. And I would continue to say that Lightbeam is providing broadband internet to a lot of customers, and by the way, I'm very selfish. Because I'm a customer of theirs, so might as well get that out. Um. There are towns that would kill to have other broadband providers in their um, city. Uh, to my knowledge, we only have one other company, which would be MediaCom that provides. Speeds comparable to this. Um. I'm not entirely sure it's a hundred percent factual, but that's to my knowledge. Uh, and I think keeping a competitive market for that is extremely important in getting our citizens a better product. Whether it be through MediaCom, if they wanna stay with that provider, or through Lightbeam. Um, I feel like. We've approached this in a way that doesn't have a lot of imagination behind it or creativity to make a deal that works. Better than going, well, anything that requires electricity needs a meter. Like that, it just seems like trying to fit a square peg into a round hole. Um. I understand the diligence the PUC has put into this. Um. And I don't diminish the work they've put into it. But as the policy's setting board, I think we should do better. Um. I would have ideas for a solution. I don't know that now is the right time to propose a solution for this. But again, I feel like we should just do better by a local business and by the ci- or doing better by the citizens of our community. So, yeah, that's what I got.
Thank you, Mr. Patternist. Any other conversation?
Yeah, I guess I I echo what uh. What the counselor patternist is saying. Um, and from just uh, an EDA standpoint, as I'm a member on that as well. Um, you know, it's not conducive to attracting other businesses to town. Um, even if it has nothing to do with their business, has nothing to do with like pole attachment. Um. To me, it's, it seems a little excessive for for what their business model is and. You know, I think there's something mentioned in a letter or somewhere along, we're worried about, you know, making exception, and then that becomes a Pandora's box, well. In real life, you you have to make exceptions for every um. Every situation. Um. You know, our our legal system shows that it doesn't work to be just black and white on things, so. You know, I I think we need to uh, to take another look at this, find a better solution for. For it, so that it's, you know, it benefits both parties. Um, but currently as it is right now, there's. You can't expect a business to to do something like that, even if it is phased in or something like that, but. Um, you know, and it's not like it's gonna kill, kill the city to. You know, find a different route, but you know, we're not losing anything by exploring this more, so. Um, I think we need to take a look back and and just. Try and do a better job, and kudos to the PUC. I know they've put a lot of work into it. Um. But I think we just, we just need to to do a better job and look, look at different options.
I do agree that it's unique, and I mentioned that when we. Passed the policy earlier. You know, it it is a unique thing, and that's why it's hard to figure out what the right thing to do is. Um, and, you know. You guys have done a good job of voicing your displeasure with it, right? And that's, that's okay, that's your right. Um. If the PUC. Can, like, I I don't wanna cut the PUC off at the knees. Like, why do we have a PUC if we're not going to listen to them or have them contribute? And so I would recommend that we send this back to the PUC with some instruction. If we do that.
So just uh, put my interpretation as far as how the the policymaking process of this, this uh. Specific situation is, is. Uh, from what I understand, the PUC isn't gonna touch this. I I think there's zero appetite for the PUC to, no matter who's directing to do, to hash this over. I think that uh, we as the final decision-making body can maybe relieve them of that duty. They've. Uh. They've decided to not. Um. Work on this specific project any further. So I think if uh, if any changes need to be made, it needs to be made with with this, this group here. And uh, I agree with counselor or patternist that tonight's not the night to be. To be brainstorming.
So that being said, I would like to move forward with some sort of actionable steps, so I would like for. I don't know if we need to make it like a formal committee or something, but. Um. I would like to have at least two of us. Well, not at least, exactly two of us.
Yeah.
Um. And staff, probably I would assume Troy would be in it, cause it's electrical poles, right? Um. Sean, you're the money guy, so you get to be in it no matter what. And you seem like a great person.
Thank you.
To. Uh. Form a ad hoc committee to address this issue and provide a. Um. Provide a solution or different direction to the council within the next, I'm gonna say two months, because I work slow, I guess.
So, but a administrative stay on the current.
Yes.
Okay.
Um. And like I said, I would hope to bring a new agreement prob. Or a new fee schedule, I should say, right?
Yeah, the agreement itself is fine. I believe what needs to be addressed or looked closer at, if what I'm hearing. From the council is an amendment to the fee schedule to include another option. Um, which I will agree with the mayor. Um, I've, I've brought two different amendments to the fee schedule to the PUC. Um, to have them both voted down, so I would agree that that resource has probably been exhausted.
That's fine. They're, like I said, they're not the policy creating board.
And that's also respecting them as well, cause they have been. Uh. They've, I don't know how many hours as a collective group they've spent on this project and.
Bunch.
And if they've just, they've decided that they're done with this project, then we can honor that as well.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so who? Is your volunteering?
I'll volunteer, I guess.
Well, I'll volunteer as well.
Alright. Very good.
But like a amendment for a June meeting? Is that a good timeframe?
Let's aim for the last meeting in uh, May.
In May.
You know.
I'm sure Light.
Good goals.
Appreciate uh.
Absolutely.
What's going, going on in the future as well.
Hopefully before then, but you know what? Under promise over.
Good line.
That, is it gonna be a public meeting or is that not public then?
Well, it would just be two of us, so I think it'd just be a committee, which it. It wouldn't have to be a public meeting, but.
Pam, could you weigh in, please?
Yep, so this is a subcommittee um, of council, that's advisory of council. Um, so it is not um. Subject to the open meeting law um, for purposes of um, since I'm hearing from you all that council's the final decision maker on this.
Yes.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, so this is a, just a loosely formed committee to take a look and and um. Review it. I would, though, you know, even though it's not technically subject to the open meeting law under the statutes, it probably would benefit you to. Um, at least for one meeting, invite um, some of the Lightbeam folks to come and answer some of those questions. And really be able to dig into what the, what some of the concerns and frustrations are.
That kinda matches my intention, but.
That kinda matches my intention, but.
We would appreciate it.
Cool. Any other conversation about pole attachments? Alright. Alright, uh, any reports from staff?
Yes, so a couple of different reports, um, thank you. Um, a couple of reports, I just wanted to let you all know, um, the Redville County HRA EDA Executive Committee. Selected the city of Redville to be the location of the childcare project if the grant funds are awarded. Uh, they said it was a very competitive process, uh, their decision was based on the number of childcare slots each city currently has. And the number of slots lost when Little Lambs in Danube closed, um, land donation services and a central location. Um, so that's just currently the direction that they're going. I thanked them for the opportunity to apply, and I said, hey, if you are applying again, or if more opportunities arrive for these types of resources. Please reach out, we desperately recognize this need, um, but any childcare within the greater county is better than zero childcare. So, um, the other things we have is Olivia Liquor has a new website. OliviaLiquor.com, um, they're working to improve their services to their customers, where you can order online. And they're working on being able to bring it out to your car, so uh, buy local, support our government. Uh, comprehensive plan, um, we did get a draft back from Antonio. Um, I just wanna extend a huge appreciation to staff who went through a lightning round of edits twenty-four hours. To return it back to Antonio with an additional round to help try and push this across the finish line. The hope is it'll be considered for the planning commission at their next meeting, and then adoption by the council at your next April meeting. Um, and then this week, April fourth, myself, Chief and Jasmine will be in Wilmer for a League of Minnesota Cities. Safety and Loss Control Workshop, so if you're looking for us on Thursday, that's where we are.
But just to add to, uh, piggyback on, on the administrator's. Communication about the uh, the grant offering, we, we put together what we thought was a pretty aggressive. Uh, proposal for him, uh, I think the winner had some, some facilities that were ready. Uh, and uh. This was gonna be a lot easier, I think, project for them to turn around quickly, but we, we did have some, some land identified. That we were willing to um, offer to the cause and also offer um. The purchase of playground equipment for these pods, but uh, in the end, we did not get chosen, and that's uh, that's the way that goes. Um, any other reports from staff? Any reports from council?
I have none.
We'll be uh, we'll be testifying uh on a, on a. Bill uh sponsored by Senator Lang on Wednesday for uh small city assistance funding, so that'll be. Um, that'll be an interesting experience, well, we'll do our best. It'll be virtual. Hey, maybe I'll sit here. Okay, uh. No more reports here, are there any notices or communications?
No.
Okay, I'll call for a motion to adjourn the meeting then.
So move, second.
Motion's been made by Evers, seconded by Baumgarter to adjourn, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Alright.
I'll oppose same sign. We are adjourned, thank you.